Okay, welcome back. So where we left off is number eight and we left off a with no board action on the bid for or the professional services agreement between Calaveras County and Phillips and Jordan Incorporated for the hazardous tree removal services. But I still need, I think we should have a little bit more discussion around that. And I think I need to have probably Admin, let me put you on the spot. Admin to describe the situation around OES FEMA and all of that.
So one of the critical components is that funding for the majority of this, the majority of funding for this project comes through FEMA and CAL OES and it is a project under the emergency response. One of the reasons, as I mentioned before, that we are at a point where we have to fast track things is, and we really can't afford further delays, is due to what the OIG reported out and the draft, their draft responses to the compliance audit and what FEMA has expressed to both Public Works and to the administrative office, that this is an emergency response project, which means it is because of the emergency and the expectation is that removing these trees as soon as possible is an emergency. Normally it is done within the first six months after a disaster. As Mr. Krovitz mentioned, they have, we have put in for the extension of an additional six months due to some of the issues with the debris removal of the home sites and PG&E trees and the vehicles on the road and already not wanting to already further clog our county roads. However, because of the delays in the original RFP for the arborist contract and having to go out and redo that, that further delay this contract, if we don't have boots on the ground in fairly short order, we risk losing $9 million in funding between FEMA and CAL OES because their attitude is going to be, well, if the county doesn't think this is an emergency, then it's not an emergency project. So my caution to the board is that the longer you draw this out, the greater the risk to the county of losing the funding for the project, and we're talking a $9 million project. And that would also mean, we would also lose the funding for the arborist contract, which is another $2 million. So we're talking a pretty big dollar amount for the county and what that, the potential impacts of that could be.
Okay. You have anything to add to that there, Megan?
I just want to reiterate that any contract of this nature, it must be awarded to the most responsible firm whose proposal is the most advantageous to the program, which is the federal program, with price and other factors considered. So that at this point, it's not just price, it's all of the factors must be considered by the board and the contract must be awarded to the most responsible firm for both price and factors. Staff has recommended what the three panel, the panel recommends, the one firm being the most responsible firm based on their assessment. And they have followed all of the requirements of the RFP and all of the requirements of the Code of Federal Regulations. And so that is, that is what staff is recommending. I don't know what else to say.
And any more comments from the board?
No, I'd just like to remind the board that I have no, I have not met any one of these contractors personally, I know nothing about them. My major concern is getting contractors to get the job done without any delays and God forbid, someone that can't perform because that brings in just a terrible scenario once we get to that point. Your performance bond is forfeited, but the county still has responsibility to get that cleaned up and the next contractor comes in at time and material and they're just looking at big dollar signs and I don't even know if FEMA would be reimbursing funds for that. That's my concern.
And the one other thing I would like to mention is that the county still has the liability to remove the trees, no matter what, because it puts the county at risk if one of those trees comes down across the right of way and someone is injured or heaven forbid, killed. So it's a project that has to be done. The question is whether or not we can move forward in sufficient time so that we can garner the federal and state funding versus having that burden fall entirely on the county.
All right, so do you have a timeline where we have to have boots on the ground?
Yeah, about three months ago. But, and what we have heard, and this is why Admin was pushing Public Works to move forward with the RFP, the review, and bring it to the board as soon as possible. The extension that we were hoping to get, or we have, I thought, received, but the first extension ends the middle of September. And if we can't show significant progress, that means boots on the ground and trees removed, then there is no way that FEMA will extend it past September.
Okay.
Is there, Mr. Krovitz can answer this, is there any requirement in this RFP that any percentage of local labor be incorporated or is there any clause like that?
No, it is specifically denied under the Code of Federal Regulations under which this professional services agreement is bid. I'd like to address the board a little bit on this. I agree with everything that CAO Ryan just said to you and what County Council Steadfield I applaud and understand the board's desire to not only award this bid to the lowest bidder, but also to award this bid to the, to a local or near local respondent.
I gotta kind of break in on that a little bit. It's not necessarily local. It's, it's the lowest bid and it also has to do with the fact that I know the panel and not any one of you guys have forestry experience, none. And that's, that's where the issue is for me.
Okay, and I mean, that's perfectly, that's perfectly legitimate.
But Jeff, I also want to reiterate that I'm not talking about the local part of that at all, but the, what is most advantageous to the county is what we're after here as a board. And given the material that we were presenting, there's no way of knowing that because we just don't have enough information.
Okay. Here's, here's the situation, is that I had suggested that we reconvene an evaluation committee to reevaluate and put some members of the board on it. We cannot do that. I've double-checked that, I've done the research, I cannot do that. You are the body that decides to make the award, you cannot be the body that does the evaluation. Therefore, I think that there are two choices that are left in front of you today. Choice number one is to award as recommended and choice two is to reject all bids and direct Public Works to re-propose this project with a different panel, with a recommendation for a different type of a panel to do the evaluations. I don't think we have other options here. Anything else puts the county at liability from a protest, breaking the law, or being held accountable by FEMA to not pay for this project. Now, that's a supreme risk, meaning that we could put a couple of change touches on the RFP and send it back out again, give them another two weeks to respond, give ourselves three or four days instead of one day to evaluate and then get it in front of you with a proper notice. But that says to me that we're, we're bringing this to award on maybe the 30th of August. And, you know, if you choose not to award on the 30th of August, eight days later, we're in a world of hurt to the tune of almost $12 million, okay? So we, it's, it's, it's a rock and a hard place here. It's what is the best for the county from an economic perspective and what is the best for the county in terms of a response to the disaster perspective? And that's not a decision that I envy you making and that you're up there. My decision is pretty easy. I get to look at these proposals, whether you believe I'm qualified or not qualified, to evaluate these from a forestry perspective or not, but there were four of us who reviewed these proposals and all four of us came up with a top-ranked firm that we believed would serve the purpose of fire response recovery in the best interest of the county that would be defensible for when FEMA comes and audits us, because they will. Okay? And so from our perspective, it was our aversion to the risk of having to pay for this out of our own general fund or out of my department's funds for roads that led me to the conclusion that B&amp;J was the highest qualified candidate who submitted proposals. So if you wish to question that judgment, that's fine, we can go back and do it again. But you're putting a program that is already under severe schedule risk at a little higher schedule risk. You're talking about the difference of me awarding potentially on the 30th of August, not being able to have boots on the ground by the 8th of September, and potentially not having boots on the ground by the, the middle of September and having the whole program go away without the liability being resolved. So I will tell you that at lunchtime, I sat down and had a conversation with CAL OES and our representatives, Dave Gillens, who's the head of this disaster at CAL OES, and then Robbie Larson, who's the manager for the Calaveras County portion of it and his counterpart at FEMA. And they reiterated to me on the phone this afternoon that what is really, really important is that we are defensible in our decision-making process and defensible in our award process. And that's why I'm coming back to you and saying you have two choices. You can award this contract today or you can reject all proposers and send us back to start over. Those are the two choices that are in front of us. In terms of scheduled duration for a rebid on this, as I say, I think I can have it on the street in two to three days. I can give it another two-week bid period, we can receive bids again, and then we can have another week for, for evaluation. Give us more time, give us a chance to get a forester onboard. But then I have my two-week preparation of a bid package for the board in advance unless you guys want to have an emergency meeting after a 72-hour notice. So I'll go whichever way you want, I work for you, but I want you to have the information so that your decision is based upon the facts of the case and the facts of the case are. Our independent, we did not, I don't believe that anybody who reviewed these proposals had an axe to grind or a preference to, to, to award. I believe that whether we were qualified or unqualified, the results were consistent four for four in terms of the rank. Any other questions? Thank you.
You know, I'm just looking at scheduling, so what I hear you saying is if we decide to kind of go back to the drawing board. So if we gave the two-week notice out again, we're looking at having bids back to us by the 10th. That's two weeks from tomorrow. And then if you had three days to evaluate, it could be back on our board agenda on the 16th?
No, it can't. The earliest would be the 30th.
No, because you have to send it out.
Send what out?
Send the RFPs out.
Right. And you also, you also have to be able to agenda that meet the 72-hour requirements under the Brown Act and everything else.
I gotta tell you, it takes a month to do anything around here.
I also have to have Supervisor Ponte, I also have to have a week for protest in accordance with the regulations. So it's an extra week.
Okay.
So let's bring it back to the 30th.
I'm not willing to gamble with $12 million, the county's money.
Okay, so since we started discussion again, I'll just go ahead and open it up again for public comment.
I'm Peter Race from the 5th District. I feel like I'm going to use Scarlet. If you don't buy it today, it's going to be gone and you're going to be sorry. Thank you. Now, the other thing I'd like to mention is that letter from FEMA, is that public-private communications or private communication? You keep referring to FEMA or your letter or something. Is that available to the public?
The OIG report is in draft form, it will be available to the public and become a public document once it's been finalized.
Okay. Then has any one of you folks seen that letter from FEMA? Because I, I'd be more than happy to volunteer to call up Washington DC and maybe I can ring some bells who pulls, holds the purse for FEMA. Because all this thing is going on, oh, FEMA said this, FEMA does that, they're going to threaten you? Well, I like to talk to some people in Washington DC that can threaten those guys. And I'd be more than happy to do, call somebody up, an environmental committee, that maybe he can talk real nicely to FEMA, get your act together or hit the road. But under this constant threat, oh, if you don't do it, to me, it's not right. I don't care whose fault or the delay, whatever, okay? But I do resent FEMA threatening folks in this county. Maybe FEMA needs some recognition. I do resent FEMA threatening from my elected official, doing what's right for the right price. Because you five are the only ones accountable at that table, nobody else. You are the only one accountable. And it's a federal body that you're dealing with. And I do resent, just like I used to hate East Bay mud threatening you folks. I do resent when FEMA threatening you folks. So if FEMA had correspondence with you at taxpayers' time, I don't need interpretation. Even I see it black and white, I want to see who signed the damn thing and I talk to his boss, just like you do in normal businesses. Thank you.
Chairman, if I may, FEMA, FEMA is not threatening the county. FEMA has guidelines for public assistance for the different type of projects they fund under public assistance and we are going by those guidelines. The guidelines are for an emergency response project such as this, we are to have it done within six, the guidelines say, state that it must be done within six months of the declared disaster. If you can request an extension, the first extension is a six-month extension through CAL OES and CAL OES has that authority to extend it. After that, it goes to FEMA and FEMA then can grant an additional extension. But what we have been told over the phone numerous times by officials through CAL OES and our FEMA representatives is that they need to see movement on the project because it is an emergency response project, something that needs to be dealt with right away. And if the county is not acting in that manner, then they do not have to extend or grant the extensions.
Let's get that.
Mr. Chairman, is that all verbal or is that written? I want to see who signed it, not interpretation, personally, but both.
I'll send you the FEMA guidelines.
So you're, you're actually kind of out of order right now because you're not at the podium number one, number two. You had your turn.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Robert?
Robert Pakenger, Public Works. I worked very hard on this request for proposals and made sure that the rules of the game were very clear to everybody. Where there was a lack of clarity, proposers submitted questions to us, we answered all the questions. The evaluation process was outlined in the request for proposals. Cost was one of the factors, but not the only factor, there were other factors that were included. I was part of the panel that reviewed the proposals. Based on the information that was provided from the various proposals, I'm, I don't think that we needed an arborist or a, someone that's involved in tree cutting to be able to make a fair evaluation of the proposals. Items that we looked for were, for example, how is traffic control being handled, how are the relationships with the neighbors being handled, how is the relationship with our, with Tetra Tech being handled and so forth and so on. Those aren't items that are necessarily arborist-related types of things. We weren't getting into their business of how they were going to cut down the tree or you, whatever chainsaw they were going to use. We wanted to be sure that the roads were protected, that the neighbors were protected and that we were in conformance with the requirements that FEMA, that FEMA has. We followed the FEMA guidelines. We also followed the CAL, the Code of Federal Regulations in regards to the whole process. Throughout this process, we sent the proposals to FEMA, to CAL OES for their review. They reviewed them and they gave us what was expected, no answer, which is in a way a good answer because if they would have found something wrong, they would have told us. So we proceeded. I believe that the process was done in accordance with the requirements and in accordance with what we've outlined and the outcome is the outcome. I don't believe that adding any time to, to the review would have changed at least my opinion of the outcome. I, I reviewed them and I stand by what I saw with the proposals.
Mr. Chairman, can I call for the question, please?
Okay. Hang on.
I'd like to call for the vote, a motion and a vote.
Well, I want to do finish public comments first. Yes?
I worked on the proposal, I was the RFP coordinator. All of the items that Mr. Krovitz addressed, we spoke to. In accordance with the language for rebuttal and contest, I contacted the Public Works Department directly on the 13th and requested the scorecards. I was told that they would be out in two weeks. I did not receive that documentation until last Thursday. So that didn't afford me the proper time for protest. We wouldn't be here today. I hear what everybody's saying, I understand the sensitivity of the funding. I want what's best for the county, but I don't believe that potentially our proposal was read into the manner which it deserved. Thank you.
Doug Benton, Sierra Mountain Construction. A couple of items that I'd like to bring to your attention. First of all, they speak about traffic control. If you look at our proposal, we speak specifically to traffic control. We name a specific name who will be in charge of the traffic control and we name specific traffic control plans that we'd be using. I can't speak to that on other proposals. I didn't review it for that. When it comes to the technical amplitude of the work, we again are licensed for the state of California with an A license, we have a D-49, which is a tree removal license, and this project requires the proper payment and performance bonds to ensure that the county is held free and clear of any liabilities. As the Public Works Director announced, all four bidders, he felt were deemed qualified and responsible to perform the work. And I believe Mrs. Steadfield also claimed, or made the mention, that the award can be based upon best value, best available proposal for the county and price definitely comes into play with that. One more item I'd like to bring to your attention. If you would possibly look into your staff and your departments requiring contracts to be put on the agenda as being awarded to the lowest or the most responsive bid as opposed to a specific name, you wouldn't have the problem that you have today. The contract could be awarded to whoever you're choosing. I believe that this one instance is a way of the departments to strong-arm this board into making decisions they may not want to make. And I applaud all of you for holding to your guns and standing true to what is right for this county and that's a $1 million savings. Thank you very much.
Any other public comments?
Yes, again, my name is Morton Sullivan. I'm a third-generation citizen of Calaveras County. Our company is involved in hazardous forest fuel removal work throughout the state. This process of making a selection is completely transparent. It was set up by you, our leadership, to choose a company that could perform this contract and there were certain criteria that had to be met. And all due respect, Supervisor Edson, it does not come down to location of that particular company, nor does it come down to price. As a matter of fact, in the RFP, the rankings that assign the values for those particular items is clearly stated, price is about third or fourth. FEMA regulations specifically state that in order to retain the county, for the county to retain the funds to implement this project, no preference can be given or discrimination made as to the location of that company, whether they're from Tooluma County or Calaveras County or Florida. So those types of criteria aren't really valid to be used. Supervisor Olivera, in response to your question, I think it was put to the board as to what percentage of the contract would be awarded to local companies if the contract was awarded to Phillips and Jordan. If you have read the proposal put in by Phillips and Jordan, you will see that my company, Sullivan Logging Company, a local company, was listed among two others. So if you wanted to quantify that percentage, there was a starting point. There would be local participation if this contract is awarded to Phillips and Jordan. What happens to the money that Phillips and Jordan makes? I'm getting the impression in listening to all of you that it's going to be perhaps surreptitiously transported to some bank out of state or something like that. I can assure you, I've been working with this company for the past 13 years, that that doesn't happen. They reinvest back into the community and they reinvest back into putting companies such as mine back to work.
30 seconds.
My company has, thank you. My company has no intention of leaving Calaveras County. I'm, at my age, I can assure you, I'm not looking for a career opportunity here, but I am looking for the opportunity to have employment to sustain myself and my family. So we're going to be here and we want to be able to participate in this project and we call upon And we call upon the leadership. As a citizen of this county, I call upon you to demonstrate your leadership, to make a decision based upon the selection of the evaluation committee to select Phillips and Jordan as that contractor. Thank you.
I'm trying to be real quick. This isn't the first time that staff recommendation didn't sit... You know, guys, I'm sure most agencies award to their staffs recommendation. You guys work together all the time, you know. It doesn't always happen. And in this instance, the buck stops with you guys. The evaluation, whatever, we've been through it. All these people are qualified, and you've got the final number, and it sits on your desk. You can accept the staff recommendation, or you can go the other way. As far as I can see, you're doing your due diligence. You're evaluating everything. And if that's the way you feel, and I think there's enough gray area here that, at least listening to all this discussion, there's... I understand why you're not hot to just jump on the staff recommendation. I think you should go the other way. You've got a time constraint. I don't see just two options of kicking this out or giving it here. I think you folks should have the authority to sit down and do what you think is right. And if that's awarded today to Sierra Mountain, then do it. Thank you.
Public comments? None? Any other public comments? Back to the board. Okay.
Once again, Mr. Chair, call for the question. Motion and vote.
Okay. Do you want to go there? Do I have a motion to approve?
I saw move.
We have a motion by Supervisor Olivera. Do I have a second? Second? None? Okay. That is a lack of second.
May I make a recommendation?
Sure.
Or, I don't know if...whatever. But I would ask this go back to staff and that we...to start this process all over again. And I ask for the evaluation committee to include at least one forester in the evaluation process, if not two. That would be my suggestion.
Will do.
And as far as a message to FEMA, the fact that we're trying to save them a million bucks and it concerns us in this emergency situation, I think that's an important statement to make. We're not taking lightly their assistance in this, or the fact that they're helping us out with the grant.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So we'll move on then to our consent agenda. Consent agenda items are expected to be routine and non-controversial. They will be acted upon by a board at one time without discussion. Any board member, staff member, or interested party may request removal of an item for the consent agenda for later discussion. Any members of the public wish to remove a consent agenda item? Any members of the board wish to remove a consent agenda item?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I second.
Motion by Supervisor Ponte. Second by...oh, yeah. I can still do that. Second by Supervisor Kearney. Public comments, please.
I'd like this. I'm Pilaris from General Land, 5th District. I'm not as quick as you guys. I'm just a dumb slow forwarder. This is 15. Item 15.
You didn't pull it.
Well, I had my hands up. I don't know how...should I jump up and down? Okay, fine, no problem. I'll bring it up later or in Facebook. Thank you.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye. Both? Supervisor Nance. Do they want to go first?
I'd like to wait the press gets back. Go ahead. I'd like to wait the press gets back.
Terry, you want to go?
Sure. I attended a IHSS meeting yesterday. Just we continue to have a full advisory committee, no openings, which is nice to have. And committee is working on a fact sheet that they can use as a go-out-to-different community events to promote IHSS and to inform and educate the public as to the services that are provided. And working on a newsletter and hopes to have a September presentation to the board to give them a, I think by then, a biannual update, twice-a-year update. EMS committee, we meet every other month, and our next meeting is scheduled for the 31st of August. Typically, it's held on the 10th, but we had a few of our member agencies unable to attend, so it was rescheduled to the 31st. And we did not have a Central Sierra Child Support Meeting in July, and we will resume our regular schedule on August 22nd. And that's all I have to report.
Okay. Thank you, Chair. Last week was just a very involved week for me. I attended the NACO conference in Long Beach, arriving on Friday morning and coming back late last night. Had a tremendous amount of information. Unfortunately, I was only able to attend maybe 50% of the offered workshops. But I'd like to list the workshops I did attend. Prior to that, I did attend a LAPCO meeting on Monday. Let's get that out of the way there. And the local tree mortality meeting, our board meeting, and I attended the state meeting for the tree mortality. But getting back to the NACO convention, I did attend the...excuse me. We'll get to writing notes up here. I did attend our opening reception area where we got a chance to meet other supervisors and CEOs from counties all across the nation, big and small, rural and large. Great chance to exchange, of course, crisis information, solutions that worked and didn't work. And we maintained that relationship all throughout the conference. I did attend, the following day, the Rural County Action Caucus meeting. And this was interesting because it was counties with less than 50,000 population, which we fit that niche. And it was surprising to see how much representation from the entire country was at this conference. Once again, sharing the same prey out with some problems and some solutions, and that worked out very well. I attended a workshop, How Effectively to Market Your County, involving in, of course, social media, involving PIOs, involving media, things of that sort. And that gave us a little bit of insight on how we do it compared to how some of the other counties in the nation do it. Our general session meeting, we laid out where NACO was going to go. California was actually represented very well. California had what they called 100% attendance. In other words, that center represented from all 58 counties to the convention. California is the largest entity of NACO because their votes are issued on the amount of dues you pay. Calaveras County has two votes. Supervisor Wright is our alternate representative. I haven't voted. You got...no, I voted for you. I voted for you. I gave you your home address, so. We did attend, there was a campaign activity for second vice president. The two candidates, one went from Illinois, one was from California San Diego area. And it's kind of unique because they actively campaigned. I thought it was at the national convention. I mean, they had signs and stickers and posters and the actual thing. They had a section for California, and then every single state had their own individual section with a sign. Ironically, one hour before the vote was to take place, the candidate from Illinois conceded to the candidate from California. And I must say, that was the most impressive speech I've ever heard. After realizing that the best man was actually going to be seated for that position, he graciously told him he would support him in all endeavors, and I genuinely believe he was sincere about that. So a very impressive part of that organization. I did attend on Sunday, attended several workshops, one for public preparedness response to Zika as a case history. I understand we're having somewhat of a medical crisis and the Zika mosquito-borne disease. We haven't seen it up here too much, but it's coming. So that kind of gave us an insight of what we can do and how we're going to respond to that. This was probably one of the better ones. I attended managing the relationship between county officials and county attorneys. And believe it or not, I had some great information out of there. And I see where I've made some headway, and I've made some mistakes. I plan to correct that, but that's going to be a two-way street, folks. So we'll see if we can make that happen. I did attend for county officials, specifically elected officials, best practices in active shooting, shooting situations. And believe me, being from a law enforcement background, I was kind of narrow-minded when it came to a narrow focus of what you have to do. But dealing with the other side of that fence, now I'm elected official, and some of the information brought up really brings home that we're not prepared for that. As elected officials, I don't think we're prepared for that. There's some things that we need to talk about, which we'll talk. And one of those things is security in a board meeting, evacuation plan, self-preservation things of that sort. I'll cover that later. I also attended a prepared-for-a-catastrophe comes-to-your-community. Well, I was probably one of the guest speakers on that one because we had the Butte Fire. And we were able to share information on that, some good, some bad, and we're dealing with that now. And this is not going to be a quick process, folks. That meeting, I learned that it's going to take years, years, for us to even think about coming back normal. I attended Technology Tools for Engaging Your Constituents, which is very important. Deals with social media, deals with the media. I picked up a very important thing. I'll discuss that later in effective time. And one of the workshops I attended was running an effective meeting. And I had a little practice doing that today. I learned what some terms are, have a better understanding of how we can run an effective meeting and make it fair for everybody, speakers, board members, staff, the whole ball of wax. All in all, I did attend the last session prior to coming back tomorrow. I mean, tomorrow. Yesterday, it's a long drive. Been a very busy week. Disaster comes in all shapes and sizes and how county governments are lacking increasing and extreme events. So a lot of preparedness of what's happening in our nation today with the politics the way it is, with our public safety the way it is, with the catastrophic events we're seeing. All in all, this was a very, very effective convention. I would recommend to the board that we continue to attend these conventions. We pick up a lot of good information out of them, plus the membership. And one of the main things, we got national recognition as Calaveras County. I was surprised how many people know about jumping frogs and the Butte County...I mean, the Butte Fire and unfortunately, our marijuana situation. I was able to discuss those situations with other supervisors from Oregon, Washington, Humboldt County, things of that sort, and got a real insight of where we're going with this and some of the pitfalls we see lying ahead of us. Once again, I recommend to do this again. Thank you.
I attended the Calaveras Consolidated Fire Board Meeting last evening. It was quick and fairly painless, but we had a couple things to add to it. I also, last Saturday, attended the ribbon-cutting ceremony on Calaveras Transit's hopper run. Supervisor Edson cut the ribbon, and we got to see them off and running. I realize there's a lot of, oh, concern about the finances that surround the transit, but this is an effort to think out of the box a little bit, provide Saturday service, increase commerce in the county. And I will say that Deborah Mullen and Kelly, I can never pronounce her last name.
Zach Anizer.
Zach Anizer, were there on their day off to get it going. I thank them for doing that. I attended and chaired the Solid Waste Task Force meeting since our last meeting. I want to...I don't always get to know all the county employees that are here, and when some of them leave and retire, I wish them well, but I still don't know them. But one I did get to know was a lady named Yvonne Van Zee. She was a program coordinator in her...excuse me, Integrated Waste Management. She's really a very sharp employee. Like many, she suffered losses during the Butte Fire and I guess took it as a sign to move. And so she has left the employ at Calaveras County. I wish her the best. At that Solid Waste Task Force meeting and heading to the board is a request for a proposal for a study that I had been pushing for, for a number of months now. We had to get away from it a little bit while the fire recovery is going on, but it's very important, and it'll be an analysis of our solid waste issues, where we want to go from here, how are we going to deal with it, how are we going to deal with it in the years going forward? Should we even be in the solid waste business? And so be aware that that's coming. I attended a meeting of the Calaveras Consolidated Fire Support Team, a very energetic group of mostly young ladies, but there were some other people there, too, that support the fire teams out there. Like I said, if a fire comes up, they may run to it with cold water and give it to the firemen. Really great people. They're planning a national night out on August 2nd. And the word is, there'll be a couple supervisors there handing out free hot dogs. This coming Saturday, I'm going to Calaveras Youth Wrestling-sponsored taco dinner at the San Andreas Met. It's only 20 bucks a ticket. I really hope a lot of people fill that place up. It helps the young people. I haven't seen a benefit for the wrestling group maybe ever. So I'm going to be there cheering them on, and I hope a lot of people can join me. One thing that, after the last meeting, there were people who watch us and wonder about the votes that we make, and they don't understand them, and I get it. But one thing that the board needs, in my opinion, is a public information officer that works for the board, that explains what we do, maybe manages a website. There's been...we, since I've been sworn in, have dealt with so many very tough subjects, and I don't believe that the public is getting the information on them. And the reason why I say that is I get home and people are asking me about what we did. Last time I got home and somebody asked me why we approved marijuana for grow in the county, and I said, "We did no such thing." Said, "We had the chance to send an initiative either to the ballot or okay." We chose to send it to the ballot. They're good with that, once I explained it to them. Then I explained the cannabis tax initiative that we're dealing with. People see this, and while we may take it a second nature and understand what we did, they don't understand. We need somebody that responds to the board. I don't know if it's a full-time job or it's a part-time job. I even had another board...I was discussing this with a school board member, and they thought maybe they could share it with us if it came down to that. But I think it's important because people do not understand always what we do, and I think if they understood, there would be a little better buy-in on it. I know that there are news sources out there, but I still think we need somebody that responds directly to the board. In closing, I want to thank every... they don't understand. We need somebody that responds to the board. I don't know if it's a full-time job or it's a part-time job. I even had another board, I was discussing this with a school board member, and they thought maybe they could share it with us if it came down to that. But I think it's important because people do not understand always what we do, and I think if they understood, there would be a little better buy-in on it. I know that there are news sources out there, but I still think we need somebody that responds directly to the board. I, in closing, I want to thank everybody on the board for the vote where they did not certify the recall. I realize that was a tough vote. I honestly did not watch the tape or listen to it all. I know that it required some thought on all of you. I think that the recall system is somewhat broken if it requires fellow board members to certify, oh, a reason for someone who has voted on policy to making decisions, and maybe that needs to be looked at. I'm not saying that the recall isn't part of America. It is, apparently, but I just want to say I thank you for your votes. Had I been on this board at the time, I would have voted the same way. I appreciate that.
Chris?
Yeah. Well, we might want to follow the board on bringing back an agenda item to discuss staffing for the supervisors, because I think we actually need more staffing for the supervisors going forward. You know, not only the information officer, but actual, you know, direct administrative help for the supervisors themselves. Because we live in a different era. I mean, today is an example of where, you know, that's one agenda item and how complex that one agenda item can be. And so I think it's no longer the 1970s in Calaveras County. And so, you know, we don't have 12,000 people, and we're not dealing, we're just dealing with a lot of, really, a lot of layers to everything we discuss here. And we need more direct administrative help for us. Not saying you guys aren't doing a good job, but that's not your job to help us. So I think, like most other counties do, almost all, have some staff. And so I'd like to look at that for future agenda, if you guys are willing to.
Well, I think getting the information out is very important. I know we had an information officer during the fire that worked with admin. I'm talking about something completely different, that somebody that is explaining what we do, that maybe works with the chair or the vice chair, and gets the word out to people on what has been decided. I can't tell you how many times I've come home after board votes and people have contacted me in one way or another because they believe they understood what we did, but they truly didn't. And I think it would save, that alone would save a lot of us time and public frustration if we could communicate it. I mean, let's face it, these cannabis votes in the last year, they're so confusing that I have to rethink what we've talked about after the meetings. And I never even knew what a, there are still people that are screaming about a CUP, but they don't know what an ATC is. I mean, acronyms are government speak. We start to take them for granted. Somebody needs to speak for us in a educated way on a regular basis.
I would agree. That would be something we could at least look into, discuss.
Maybe bring back an agenda item, or I'm all for it.
Be worth a discussion.
Okay, great. Excellent. And then, just a quick update. I did attend the local Tree Mortality Task Force meeting and hoping that we get a contract or a position hired soon to lead that here at the county level. And I know that's in process, but hopefully that will happen before our next meeting on the Tree Mortality Task Force. I also attended the Upper McCallum River Watershed Authority meeting on Friday and the, on Monday, the Muggaloo Job Training Agency meeting. Interesting part about the Muggaloo Job Training Agency is they are hiring a new executive director. So, we're going to be doing the interviews for them on, probably on August 29th, I think. So, that will be, you know, for the Muggaloo Job Training Board. Hopefully, we'll get somebody good there. It's a tough job. Many counties are involved. Very important in bringing the people, you know, who struggle to remain in the workforce, you know, bringing them back into the workforce, getting them training and job opportunities. So it's a really valuable organization, so I've been happy to be a part of that process. And that's all I have.
Okay. Steve pretty much covered most of the stuff that I was going to talk about, so that makes it easier on me. We did attend the Calco Fire, Calco Fires Meeting last night, and during that meeting, they, Jason Robatell, Chief Robatell, was able to award three firefighter badges, which is kind of really exciting for young people that are learning about firefighting and that sort of thing, and then they work their way up to that point. And I just wanted to mention their names. So, one is Malakai Stockdale, and then RJ Schultz, and Niko Tabakis, and they received their firefighter badge last night. Also, on Wednesday, tomorrow, tomorrow, we have a ribbon-cutting ceremony for the 1226 intersection in Valley Springs. It starts at 10 o'clock. This project has been going on since 2003, actually, and I want to make sure that I, you know, did a little history on it. And it was Lucy Thine who was able to put this project into play as a REM project, REM-funded project. So we owe Lucy a debt of gratitude for, you know, having the wherewithal to push for this project because it actually has turned out to be a pretty decent project. It's not a permanent fix for the area, I think, over time, but it definitely has made a heck of a lot safer for pedestrians, and it has moved the traffic along pretty darn good, so saving people time. And I'd also like to thank Robert Pakenger, because before Jeff Krovitz came in, Robert Pakenger was the interim director that actually got that project moving really well. And so, and of course, our team that was working there, the local engineer through Public Works is Tina Sock. You know, I've seen her there all the time, and we had a lot of challenges with that intersection, including, you know, fuel tanks that were buried more than we thought. So, with all of the challenges and everything that, you know, all these years that have gone by, it's a clean site. It's a good project, and as a matter of fact, on Friday up in Sacramento, our Public Works team is going to receive an award from the state because of the project, and I think that's really cool.
Yeah.
And that's all I have. Nothing?
I have one extra comment. I don't know if you have received the email from PG&E, if they have announced a debris removal program for areas impacted by the tree mortality.
Yeah.
So it's specific for private lands, 100 feet from a structure and X amount foot from a service road?
But they, it has to be, it has to be on their lines, though. It's not just anybody out there.
Okay.
So it has to be PG&E lines.
That's what I wanted to clarify, if there was something more to it than...
Not just anybody.
Okay.
And to take that one step further, it has to be a PG&E infrastructure line, not the feeder line coming from a transformer to your personal residence. There's been some real grave confusion on that. And that program deals with not only taking the tree down, removing the slash limbs, things of that sort, but it also involves removing the tree logs or trunks, if you will. Prior to this announcement, PG&E would take the tree down, remove the slash, but the logs were the property owner's responsibility. Now PG&E has stepped up effectively the 18th of July, that they will come back and take those logs away and dispose them at their cost.
Even from a year ago, too.
From a year prior, too.
So it's a little help.
It is.
It is. It's a step in the right direction. One thing we did do is, excuse me, Mr. Chair, I didn't mean to monopolize time. One thing we did do in NACO when I was at the convention was make heard our voice with CSAC representatives, also with the California State Association of Counties, and also with other county supervisors and commissioners, that FEMA needs to understand that we have an emergency situation here. Right now, we need to help our landowners on private lands deal with a very devastating bark beetle problem. At this point, it's all on their dime, and we have people leaving, they're selling their homes. Escrows are going south because they discovered they got a $15,000 to $18,000 tree mortality program. So, and we're actively doing that. We're both supervisor Wright and myself, locally and on state level, and now hopefully we've got some national attention that we can knock on FEMA's door.
Okay. Thank you. Meaning adjourned.